It'll take about a year, I'm gonna-
Are we ready?
Sure.
Ready?
Yeah.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Lawrence City Commission meeting. We'll start with the proclamations. And we're going to mix them up a little bit. We're going to start with the Tree City USA. So please come forward.
Good evening. My name's Crystal Miles. I'm the Horticulture Manager with Lawrence Parks and Recreation. Thank you for the opportunity to come this evening and celebrate planting trees. This is our 40th year anniversary for the Tree City USA Award. So this year I presented in front of Mayor Bowley's computer there is the actual award they gave us for 40 years. It's really nice. It'll be on display at the Parks Department if you want to come by and take a look at it. And we invite you to participate in our upcoming Arbor Day planting events. We'll be at Broken Arrow School on April 26, 1:30 to plant trees, and again at April 28 at Beaufort Watson Park at 9:00 AM to plant trees. And those are all with either 5th grade class or Boy Scouts. In April, the city also hosted the KU BIG event with landscape mulching teams to help with our beautification. We're doing an Arbor Day tree tour this year in South Park. And in September, we participated with electric hybrid aerial truck and our CNG water truck with the event they had at the gymnastics event for Touch a Truck. So we're really trying to touch children and learn about our profession and recruit workers for, to replace us all, I guess, and help them understand the trees and equipment that's needed, all that sort of thing. Couple weeks ago, we hosted the statewide Tree City USA event, and thanks to Mayor Bowley for coming and providing a welcome. We did that in conjunction with the KU Tree Board. They are also Campus Tree City USA and the Forest Service. Some of our highlights for 2017, which is what this award addressed, was planting over 1,000 new trees. And that's on city right-of-way, city parks, municipal buildings, and new subdivisions, removing three, over 300 trees, and pruning over 1,200 trees. One of the new things we did this last year, we certified two of our arboretums, South Park Arboretum and also the Rotary Arboretum with ARBNET, which is a program from the Morton Arboretum out of Chicago, and it's an international arboretum certification. So you can find those on our city website. And we'll be starting, starting that off with Earth Day event on Saturday. And basically, what it means is you can bring up the arboretum on your phone through a link and our city S3 storyboard, and there'll be photographs with the tree names, and you can learn about tree ID off your phone. So we're kind of marry the technology with the biology. And then we'll be working with the recreation people this summer again to teach children about that, that information. The other thing we'll be working on a lot this year will be to address the microburst cleanup again in North Lawrence and remove some trees and be pruning. So again, thanks to the community for supporting us for 40 years with our Tree City USA, and we're excited for, for today.
Thank you, Crystal, and thank, congratulations to you on the award that you received. That's great. So I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the year 2018 marks the 146th anniversary of this holiday called Arbor Day, and was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas Lawrence, Kansas has been recognized in its 40th year as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and the Kansas Forest Service, and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore I, Stuart Bowley, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 23 to 27, 2018, as Tree City USA Week, and Friday, April 27, 2018, as Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, to support our city's community forestry program, and to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Thank you.
I'm bringing your hat, too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fits perfectly.
Get to where with pride. Thank you so much. Okay, we have another proclamation. You want to come forward?
Good evening. I am Anna Jenny, Executive Director of Positive Bright Start. Thank you for your recognition of the Week of the Young Child. The Week of the Young Child is an annual celebration hosted by the National Association for the Education of Young Children, celebrating early learning, young children, their teachers, and families. It is being observed locally by the mayor's proclamation, the children's art display in retail shops along Massachusetts Street, and Positive Bright Starts' signature event, Craft and Compassion, on Thursday, April 19. Look for the Week of the Young Child banner at Clinton Parkway in Iowa and placemats at participating restaurants. Early childhood is important because of the rapid brain development that occurs during the first years of life. Brain development begins in utero. At birth, newborns can recognize human faces and discriminate between happy and sad. She knows her mother's voice and may be able to recognize the sounds of stories her mother read to her in the womb. The brain continues to develop and grow in the first three years of life. Synapses form at amazing rate, enabling the child's brain to complete more complete tasks. By age three, synaptic density reaches its peak, up to 200% of adult level. Early brain development is the foundation of human adapt, adapt, why, adaptability and resilience. During this time, experiences have great potential to affect the brain development, and children are vulnerable to persistent negative influences. These early years are a window of opportunity for parents, caregivers, and communities. We can have a huge impact on children's chances for achievement, success, and happiness. Thank you for joining me in the celebration of the Week of the Young Child. And now Nora Johns, daughter of Josh and Amberly Johns, will accept the proclamation on behalf of the young children of Douglas County.
Okay, I'll read it, and we'll go. Whereas Positive Bright Start and many other organizations that provide early childhood care and education and support services to families with young children, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 16 to the 20, 2018. And whereas these organizations and many others are working to improve early learning opportunities, which are crucial to the growth and development of young children, and to building better futures for everyone in Lawrence, Kansas, and whereas all young children and their families across the country and in Lawrence, Kansas, deserve access to high-quality early education and care. And whereas in recognizing and supporting the people, programs, and policies that are committed to high-quality early childhood education as the right choice for kids, now therefore I, Stuart Bowley, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 16 to 20, 2018, as the Week of the Young Child in Lawrence, and encourage all citizens to work to make good investment in early childhood. Thank you.
While Stuart's coming back, I'll quickly encourage people to come out Thursday evening to downtown Lawrence. The Positive Bright Starts doing their Craft and Compassion event, and I'll be, I'll be at Love Garden that evening as part of their event. And it's a pretty good time.
I think I'm at Waxman.
You're at Waxman?
I think so.
I don't remember where I am.
It's a good time. It's, it's a-
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming out.
Many, many should join.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed below on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak to an item that has been pulled off of the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments.
I want to pull number 13.
Okay, other items that Commissioner-
Pulling number 11 just for clarification.
6C.
Excuse me?
6C.
6C? Okay. Okay. I think I'd like to pull nine. Is there an item on the consent agenda that a member of the public would like to have pulled off to consent? We've got 13.
5A. And 6B.
That's 5A and 6B. Okay. So I've got 5A, 6B, 6C, 9, 11, and 13. Okay. So the balance of the consent agenda and approving all claims would be what we'd be doing. I'd accept a motion.
I would move to adopt the consent agenda minus 5A, 6B, 6C, 9, 11, and 13, plus all claims.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Herbert, second from Commissioner Soden. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we'll go with 5B.
5A.
5A.
Oh, sorry, 5A, sorry. 5A is to award a bid for Safe Routes to School Phase Two to Freeman Concrete Construction LLC. Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Michael Allman, Brook Creek neighborhood. Very happy to see the Safe Routes for Schools sidewalk program being extended in our neighborhood, particularly near East Heights School. About a month or more ago, in context with the 23rd and Crestline bulldozing of trees, I brought up the fact that this property, this intersection, had been developed the same way with the developer bulldozing all the trees without any notifying anybody. And there was a temporary use permit issued that indicated that any remaining trees should be preserved. Parks and Recreation said please consider creation of a conservation tree plan. All the trees had been bulldozed in the, in the primary area of the property except for the perimeter. Where the sidewalk is going along 15th Street are those few remaining perimeter trees. I noticed that the plan indicates removal of five, six trees. I can't remember the count now. And to me, when I looked at it, the ones that are closest to the curb, several are considerable size. Eight, 10, 12-inch caliber. I don't see anything in the indication replacing and planting trees. I'd like to request, if we are a tree city, that we take down a tree, that the city replace a tree. We like to see the sidewalk go through, but we value the trees as well. So that was my point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a plan to replace trees on that?
Mayor Zach Baker, who is a project engineer, isn't here this evening, but what I can tell you is we'll take a look at that. I don't know what the right-of-way width is there and, you know, the placement of the sidewalk. We're going to find out here shortly when we start doing our sidewalk hazard mitigation program, that trees and sidewalks planted and placed too close together causes problems. So we will, we will look at that for, for the commission and for the city. If we can add that to the project, we can do that. I just don't know what the right-of-way is there and where the sidewalks need to be in the grades and stuff at this point. But if you'll let us go ahead and award the bid, we'll take a look at that, and we can report back to the commission on that as well.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Questions for Michael or for Chuck? Public comment? Okay. I think the concern fits with Arbor Day. I'm happy with Chuck's explanation.
Yeah, I think as long as we remember to bring that back and, and discuss that.
Yeah, he said he'd report back. Okay. Again, the matter before us-
I'd move that we award bid for Safe Routes to School Phase Two to Freeman Concrete in the amount of $317,392.20.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Herbert, second from Commissioner Ananda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next is 6B, I believe.
Good evening again, Michael Allman. Speaking for myself in this regard. This has to do with designating Louisiana Street within the city limits as a main trafficway, which by state statute, primary function of which shall be the movement of through traffic between areas of concentrated activity within, between, within the city limits. Areas of concentrated activity in this case being 31st Street and then anywhere approximately 23rd and wherever else. I'm very concerned because this corridor has been a subject of discussion for years since probably around 2,000 or so, when the Indian Hills neighborhood and people on the east side of Louisiana were concerned with traffic even then, and got the Traffic Safety Commission to install the pedestrian islands in the middle to enhance crossing and potentially to slow traffic and calm traffic, which they don't do. But what they do is they cause a hazard to bicyclists trying to go by there. But that was one attempt to deal with excess traffic on Louisiana Street. Another attempt recently was when the design for the SLT was completed. I can't remember who, but certainly Indian Hills did not want to have an interchange for Louisiana Street for very similar reasons. There's been talk about roundabouts at the Checkers Wesley Hardware Confluence there. There's been a number of discussions for excess traffic or increasing traffic, or however you want to look at it on this corridor. And I'm just curious. How is this being vetted, particularly for those neighborhoods? If we're planning on the movement of through traffic, that, that tells me that the plan is to increase traffic, and it is a north-south corridor. But how extensive do we really want that corridor? And how much is the populace aware of this designation since it's just come up tonight? I think it needs further consideration and maybe public vetting. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Michael. It's my understanding that the reason that we're making this designation is so that we can bond fund the project that we're talking about doing. Is, are you concerned about the project itself, or are you concerned about the-
No, not at all. I mean, that's a good funding source, yeah.
Right. But I mean, if, if you're in favor of the project, then the way that we're going to pay for it is by issuing general obligation bonds. To be, to do that, I think we have to designate the street as a made, I mean Randy can help me, Tony can, somebody can.
Correct. And Louisiana Street from 17th South all the way to the city limits is already designated as such. This is just to catch that area north where the work is going to be done so that we can fund it.
Right. So I just wanted to clarify that you're not against the project itself. You're just-
Well, considering that I haven't seen a design, but I just think that whole process needs to be more publicly vetted. And I'm not clear what section then Louisiana we're talking about?
From 17th to south into the city is already designated as one, so this is just going to catch 17th north. Because that's where the project is, up by KU, up by the water towers we're going to be replacing.
Because the project is just two blocks, right? It's just 12th and 13th?
Correct.
Yeah. But the designation is for the entire corridor.
Right, it has to connect.
It has to connect.
You can't just do an isolated block.
It's already designated from 17th South. We're just catching the area north of that, but we have to keep it all within, so we're just connecting it all up.
Okay, yeah.
So up to 17th Street.
It already, 17th South already is, so we're just going north from 17th.
17th South already is? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
It already has been for other-
I stand corrected. Sorry to take up your time.
Okay. I kind of jumped ahead with the question, so does anybody have any other questions about this? Do we have any public comment? Okay. Again, we're going to be adopting on First Reading Ordinance 9456, designating Louisiana Street within the corporate limits of the city as a major main trafficway and repealing existing Chapter 17, Article 5, Section 17, 501 of the Code of the City of Lawrence.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Herbert, second from Commissioner Ananda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. On to 6C.
So on 6C, the last time that this was before us was a conversation about making an exception for a single chair, was my understanding, and then this would be brought back. So it has been brought back to us. But in the ordinance itself, the, the Chair of the Committee was previously required to be a member, a resident of Lawrence and Douglas County. What I'm seeing here does not require that of the Chair. And I don't think that has been a conversation for us to have, or that we have had. And so I wanted to have that conversation because I do have an opinion that that person, that Chair of that committee should be a resident of Lawrence or Douglas County.
In fact, I think if I recall, that's the conversation we had that night.
Correct.
Was that, that was the will of the commission, that that person be a Lawrence or Douglas County resident?
I think there needs to be a clarification. Diane didn't work on this particular ordinance. I would ask the commission to allow her to explain what's in the body of this recommendation.
Maybe a clarification of what is in place currently. So the current ordinance just simply says it's the Chair of the EDC Board. It does not speak to residency in this particular ordinance. However, the city commission adopted a policy last fall that does speak to residency. It talks about that generally persons appointed to an advisory board, committee, or commission should be a resident of the city or own a business within the city. And it provides for exceptions to this on a time, from, from time to time, where there would be a reason stated at the time of appointment. So that's a little bit of background for you.
Thank you.
The, what the EDC, the Economic Development Corporation, was requesting with this was that, that it, it be someone that could serve regardless of residency. So the way that it is drafted is a person active in the Lawrence business community, regardless of residence, appointed by the Economic Development Corporation of Lawrence and Douglas County. That would enable it to be someone other than the Chair of the EDC, but an appointment by the EDC. So-
It's not the Chair.
Right, it's, it's not specific to the Chair. If, if that helps. There is though language in it, as you point out, that does say regardless of residence. And so if there's a desire by the commission to not have that in there, it could still be considered on a case-by-case basis when an appointment is made by the mayor to make- a case-by-case basis when an appointment is made by the mayor to make an exception to that residency issue. So, there's a couple options for you there.
So, previously, this directly addressed the Chair, and it's removing any language that directly addresses the Chair. Is that right?
Right. It was always meant to be an, an appointment, you know, representing the EDC. It just was, it, it just stated that it was the Chair of the EDC. Um, and so, this broadens it a little bit to enable any appointment, um, from the EDC to serve in this particular slot.
And so, whether or not regardless of residence is there, the ordinance is that they have to be a resident or own a business in Lawrence and Douglas County.
Unless there's an, an exception. And that's the commission's policy.
And so, the regardless of residence doesn't change that because they would still have to have a business in Lawrence or Douglas County?
Well, um, the wording of the policy again states that there can be an exception where someone may not be a resident of the city or might not own a business in the city. So, they might be a businessperson in the city-
Mm-hmm.
-where there's a desire to make an exception with regard to that particular appointment. So, so regardless, I think the policy that's adopted by the commission would still allow flexibility of future mayors and commissions to make that exception if they so desired.
Mm-hmm. So, regardless of the regardless of residence language, um, the broader ordinance presides, and this adds nor subtracts anything.
That's true. It, it, this would make it very clear that it's regardless of residence. And that was the, that was the request of the EDC that we were trying to fulfill with the language. I'm just suggesting that if, if there's a desire to not have that language in there, um, it's, it still enables an exception to be made. It just would need to be stated at the time of appointment.
Any other thoughts on that? I'm kinda processing.
Should public comment first? Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Um, public comment? Okay, back to us.
So, my initial concern, um, in the last meeting when we brought it up was that there, there could be a difference in someone who is not a resident serving as a Chair who owns a business here, um, versus someone who is a resident and may or may not own a business here, serving as Chair of that committee. Um, I'm hearing that this, the language used here isn't necessarily affected except that the Chair has been removed and it's just another appointment onto the committee.
If I understand it correctly, I think the person that the conversation started around was actually serving as the Chair, which confuses the issue. But this appointment refers to appointment to the Board itself.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, in asking for an exception that we have the authority to grant, um, through the commission, we change the ordinance, but really it's more of a clarification within the ordinance of what is allowed and what is required.
Yes, and, and, um, this, this does a couple things. Um, it, um, it makes it clear that this person doesn't have to be the Chair of the EDC. It was, the ordinance was very specific to that. So, this enables it to be an appointment by the EDC, which again, um, I think the EDC had a desire in case the, the Chair was busy, I mean, they're busy with their Chair functions just with that committee, for example, um, that, this gives them a little more flexibility to appoint somebody, but it doesn't preclude the Chair from being that appointee. Could be anyone from the EDC to serve. So, primarily, it's that flexibility. And then, the language that's, um, that says regardless of residence would, would open up the opportunity for that appointee to be somebody who didn't live within the city or own a business, um, the way that it, the way that it's worded. And, and that was a clarification. Um, again, if the commission doesn't want to include that in the ordinance, there's still a mechanism for an exception to be made when the appointment is done.
I think the redundancy makes it confusing. So, I would prefer personally not to have the regardless of residence when we already have an art ordinance that addresses that specific issue and allows us to make that exception.
So, you'd like to just take out regardless of residents in the comma?
Yes.
Maybe two commas? Any thoughts?
I'm fine with that. I think they need to be a resident of the county at least, though, so it feels a little strange.
I'm trying to remember the conversation we had that night, and I can't speak to whether or not there were three of us going that direction, but I, I remember Lisa and I having kind of a back and forth where we were both on the same page and we talked about the fact that, you know, Lawrence is a community with over a hundred thousand residents and it only seems reasonable that in a community of a hundred thousand people, we have advisory boards made up of only our own residents. Um, I, I don't think that's an unreasonable expectation.
So, perhaps we should give staff direction to put in there that they need to be a resident of the county or of the city as well. Well, I think that we established a broad ordinance when we made, and I think this was before I was on the commission, but we consolidated several-
Right, yeah.
-and created a standardized list of requirements. And on that was that they are a resident of Douglas County, a business owner, or, or Lawrence, um, a business owner with exceptions that can be made-
Right.
-by the commission. And so, that's a wholly separate issue, it seems like, if we wanna, if we wanna drag that back out.
Right. Yeah, I don't really wanna drag that back out. I like the idea that we can make an exception. And, and frankly, um, if the Board of the Economic Development Corporation of Lawrence and Douglas County has confidence in the person that they're appointing, um, you know, I, I don't really wanna get in the way of that too much. I mean, I, I have some, some confidence in those folks. And, um, so, you know, it's possible that without Lisa, we're not gonna be able to really come to this.
I think, as I recall the conversation as well, the, this is a designated kind of position from the EDC. And so, the, that creates a distinction unto itself to begin with. So, it's like some of the other positions that we've talked about, that others get to designate who that individual is. And a lot of the people on the EDC, if you think about it, are businesspeople, um, with some very long-established businesses in the communities that don't actually have to live within the jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Um, and so, that's why we came back with the language as crafted based on the conversation that was around the table, that this is kind of a designated position to begin with.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, what's your pleasure? Do we wanna, um, do you wanna require it to be someone who lives in the city or has a business here?
I don't-
Because I think there might be three for that, if that's where you-
Well, for the EDC, I don't know that you wanna go specific to the city necessarily because it is the-
Well-
-development. I mean, it's for Lawrence, Douglas County.
So, we're kind of already making the exception there to begin with, right?
Well, but, I mean, the nature of the, the body, I, I-
Yeah.
I think if, if it's the Economic Development Corp for Douglas County, I think it's reasonable to expect Douglas County.
Right.
I don't know that it has to be city limits of Lawrence.
Okay. So, we're already kind of making the exception for that. But, I mean, if we take out the commas and the regardless of residents, I'd be okay with it. And so, that's kind of where I am.
Yeah.
Yeah, if that's where you are. But it doesn't sound like you two are there, so, you know, we might have to wait for a third.
I, I mean, all the, I don't know. I'm willing to compromise on it. It's, this isn't something I'm gonna bite tooth and nail for. I just, I think it's, I just think that there's somewhat ridiculous in nature that in a community this large, we're having to farm out advisory position.
Well, I mean, we, we can defer this if that's where you wanna go.
I think that they are require, like, they have their own designations. However, our broader overarching ordinance regarding committees requires-
Yes.
-Lawrence or Douglas County resident or ownership of a business in Lawrence, um, with exceptions to that. So, they would need, in their appointment, to conform with that ordinance or request an exception to that. So, for me, that covers that without the need for redundancy or unnecessarily limiting a single appointment on a single committee in our, in our ordinances. So-
Okay.
For me, that works.
I'm okay with just striking the regardless language that you pointed out.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, then, I would move that we approve ordinance nine four five eight, clarifying the appointment of the representative of the Economic Development Corporation of Lawrence, Douglas County on Public Incentives Review Committee with the modification of that ordinance to strike regardless of residence and the appropriate commas. Second.
So, we have a motion from Commissioner Ananda, second from Commissioner Soden. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, number nine. This is to receive a request to annex approximately ninety-seven point four acres for proposed residential development located on East Nine Oh Two Road, south of North Seventeen Hundred Road, and refer the request to Lawrence, Douglas County Planning Commission for consideration and recommendation, and authorize the city manager to give statutory notice to Rural Water District Number One of the city's intent to annex the subject property. I'm, just wanted to have a conversation about this one. Um, receiving a request to annex ninety-seven acres, um, I thought might wanna be on the agenda as opposed to consent agenda. And, uh, I guess I'm a little concerned about whether we're ready to go out in that direction or not. So, I thought we'd have a conversation. I don't know if anybody wants to make a presentation on this?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I can just generally talk about the process for annexations when they're received from a, a private party. Um, what we do with those is we give them to the City Commission to give us authority to provide notice to utility companies and also to direct that it goes to the Planning Commission, which is a local policy, not within state statute. Um, so, this type of annexation, the process would be to receive a recommendation and a full report from staff through the Planning Commission on whether or not it makes sense to, to annex property. Annexations really should be mutually beneficial, right, to the city and the private requister. And so, we'll look at things such as service levels, infrastructure requirements, who funds infrastructure requirements, whether there's sort of the need for the, for the annexation, the timing, the phasing, all of those things. This action tonight doesn't obligate you in any way except to send it to the Planning Commission and to send notice to those utility providers that there has been a request made. You will see this in its full form and full analysis at a later date.
Um, how much staff time does it take to, to do something like that?
It's, um, it's similar to a rezoning request. In fact, this particular, um, request has rezoning requests associated with it. So, um, you know, in the, in the, well, relative to other items we have, it's, it's good amount of staff time to process.
By good amount, what do you mean? I mean, a lot or not too much?
A lot.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. So, essentially, what would be obligating ourselves to do is spend a lot of staff time to-
Right, we're, that, that's correct.
Yeah.
And I think you're also obligating yourself to have the discussions about whether annexation in this area of town is the, is the right thing to do, the right timing, the right, um, type of project here.
Okay. Any questions for? Okay, public comment? Okay, back to us.
I think we have a citizen request to start a process. I think we ought to start the process. If we decide that annexation is not in our future that direction, we can certainly have that conversation, but doesn't make any sense to have that conversation till the process is started.
Yeah, I think having the opportunity to get the feedback and input on this is appropriate and necessary. I do have concerns about, um, like, spending a lot of staff time on something that we may or may not be interested in.
I mean, that's true. That's true of any issue, though. I mean, there's not a single issue that comes before the city that ultimately, that's the nature of due process is, process.
But it's also part of our scope, though, is to steer the ship of City Hall and what we would prefer that City Hall would be spending their staff time on, because we don't have unlimited staff. So, I understand the concerns.
Well, I think that the process gives you the plus minus of the proposal, which is what you base your decisions on. And that due process brings in public commentary about whether this is a good thing or not such a good thing for the community. So, I recognize that this takes time. If that were the only consideration I used, whether we pursue different things that we get to deal with all the time, there'd be a lot of things that we wouldn't touch. Uh, but it's kind of the nature of our business, and so, we end up spending a lot of time on, on issues that ultimately don't get ratified by this commission or any other commission that you go forward. But, the process still has value because it gives you information that you can't possibly know at this stage of the process.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make that. Uh, I would move we receive the request to annex approximately ninety-seven point four acres for proposed residential development located along East Nine Oh Two Road, extended South North Seventeen Hundred Road, and refer the request to the Lawrence, Douglas County Planning Commission for consideration and recommendation, authorize the city manager to give statutory notice to Rural Water District Number One.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Herbert, second from Commissioner Ananda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions?
I, I. How about that?
Which one?
I.
Okay. I guess that's four. Thank you. And thank you. I appreciate those explanations. On to eleven, I believe. Matthew?
Yeah, this is a real quick one. This was, I'd received a constituent phone call to, and ask that we make a public record clarification. On item eleven, we're initiating a text amendment to the City of Lawrence Land Development Code, and part of that code deals with the use of conditional zoning, specifically that the commission is, is reviewing, um, and asking staff to review with the intent of removing conditional zoning. The constituents' concern dealt with whether or not individuals who'd received conditional use up to this point would be effectively grandfathered in, and whether any policy that came from this body would be moving forward. Um, and I, I had spoke to Scott McCullough before the meeting and just asked that, that he would make a public clarification on that. I don't know that we need to have a conversation. I mean, if you want, we can, but this was more just as a, a public statement of clarification.
And Commissioner Herbert, that's a good question, and similar to the last item, this just gets the process started. So, we'll be asking ourselves all kinds of kind of process-related questions. Um, in preliminary discussions with city attorney's office, anything we've done in the past to rezone property in a conditional way won't be affected by what we do going forward with it versus what we're used to seeing in terms of nonconformities when we change standards in the zoning code. This doesn't really change the standards of the zoning code. It changes the methods by which we rezone property. So, our position right now is that it, it should not affect those. But keep that question in mind as we fully research and evolve this topic.
Okay. Okay, any public comment? Okay, any public comment?
Michael Allman, Brook Creek Neighborhood. As I recall, and Scott, maybe you correct me, the first instance that Lawrence made use of conditional zoning, I believe, was when the Salvation Army wanted to put a homeless shelter in our neighborhood. I can't think of a time earlier than that. We were very concerned because it seemed to be giving the developer a lot more leeway and put the neighborhood at a disadvantage. But then another instance was when our neighborhood, and Mr. McCullough may, you know, illuminate us on this as well, we were fighting an industrial salvage yard in our neighborhood at Twelfth and Haskell, and the conditional zoning situation actually made that situation work. So, it's just something that I think needs to be very carefully looked at, the pluses and the minuses, and I think Mr. McCullough's got a lot of experience in that. But from our neighborhood's sake, we just, yeah, we just want to make sure it works under all circumstances.
Thanks, Mike. Other public comment? Okay, back to us.
I guess the only thing I'd add is, you know, that, that those who entered into it to effectively deals with the city in good faith on both ends, I'd be, you know, very careful on our end to change in policy that would retroactively negate those deals in any way. I mean, at the time that, that those agreements were made by whatever body was here and whatever body sat out there, they were made in good faith. So, any policy changes we make ought to be moving forward, not looking back.
I'd entertain a motion.
I would move we initiate a text amendment to the City of Lawrence Land Development Code, Article thirteen, to address conditional zoning.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Herbert, second Commissioner Ananda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thirteen. That you, Leslie?
Yeah, this has to do with the raise in pool fees.
Good evening, commissioners. Derek Rogers, Director of Parks and Recreation. First of all, in the memorandum, I have a correction and a clarification. The second, or the third statement where it talked about two thousand eight and two thousand seventeen annually, first of all, the, the dollar amount between those two annual years is a hundred and sixty nine thousand eight hundred thirty, a hundred, a hundred, a hundred sixty nine thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars. It wasn't every year, that's the clarification, it was just a snapshot of those two years. The big picture, the memo and the admission, or the fee increase is based on the current market analysis. I do have some background, if you'd like to hear it, on the aquatics programs.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Aquatics is the most expensive and the largest facility staffed recreation function within Parks and Recreation. Aquatics currently employs a hundred and fifty-one part-time staff, five full-time staff dedicated specifically to aquatics operations. Of all the staff recreational program facilities, aquatics is the highest disproportion between revenues and sales tax support. Daily operations of direct costs, that's maintenance and operations, are covered fifty-five percent by revenues, forty-five percent by sales tax support, based on twenty seventeen actual numbers. Based on all revenue streams, that includes everything we bring in for aquatics, that's swim teams, rentals, events, programming, and other staff fees, based on direct costs, all big programs like that should be, at a minimum, funded by revenue by a minimum of seventy percent. In this case, it should be seventy, eighty percent. The actual budget in twenty seventeen was one million, three hundred twenty-one thousand sixty dollars, six hundred dollars. Our revenues were seven hundred thirty, three hundred fifty thousand dollars, fifty-five percent. So, to be at that seventy percent, we would have needed nine hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars. That would be an increase to balance at that roughly seventy percent of one hundred ninety-four thousand, eight twenty-six. The requested phased program on the admissions by the twenty twenty timeframe will bring in roughly a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, that leaves us short about fifty-nine thousand dollars. But we think by twenty twenty, we can balance through other programs. So, what we've tried to do is we've expanded programs and funding streams and increased every other fee within the aquatics program. We've left one fee alone, and that's been the daily admission rate. The last time we increased it was two thousand eight. How do we do this? Like I said before, we've added one swim train team, so now we're up to three swim teams. And currently, for the summer, I know KU is going to be working with this. So, technically, we have competition for four teams to program into our swimming facilities. And currently, our aquatics infrastructure, and it's like all our infrastructure, as we expand programs, we start to get limited by space. So, our recommendations were to allow Parks and Rec to bring a daily admission rates up to average fee for our area of like-sized facilities, change the age from youth from five to seventeen to three to seventeen, or, so the age is changing, so that's in line with the other facilities. And it's a two-phase approach, a dollar this year, starting roughly May twenty-sixth with the opening of the outdoor pool, and then the second round would be in twenty twenty. We felt that this was an appropriate way to start to bring the fees up with having a minimal impact as possible to the public. Last year, our department gave approximately five thousand daily passes to community youth in need. The value of the passes varied from free to fifty percent, and we will continue to support the programs. Benefit groups included Boys and Girls Club, Boy Scouts, Lawrence Public Library Summer Reading Program, Kansas Department for Children and Families, Douglas County United Way, Burton Ash Mental Health Services. And if you'd like, I have the aquatics division supervisor who can talk about more things they do for the youth that may have an economic hardship of getting to the pools. Any questions?
Do you want to hear from them?
No, I don't have any questions.
If they're here, we might as well hear from them.
Laurie?
Laurie.
I know we have public comment, too.
Yeah.
Laurie Mattis, Aquatic Supervisor for the city. We also do events like buck nights once a month. We have two-dollar Tuesdays during, during the summer months. We, we have, it doesn't really impact the youth, but we do have senior swim free also in there. So, those are some of our programs that we do.
Thank you. Public comment?
I wish I could hear better. I'm a candidate for hearing aids, and I'm trying, and, and I didn't really hear everything. But I'm Mark Begert. I live up in the Quail Run District, and I'm the treasurer of the Masters Swim Group. And I noticed on the information that I was looking at that I couldn't detect how you guys handle rentals. I know you're looking at daily fees, but our club rents the pool at the indoor pool and also at the outdoor pool. And I'm seeing a significant cost increase when I go from the indoor pool to the outdoor pool. So, you know, I definitely would like to negotiate those, but I was wondering, because I didn't see anything in the paperwork, how you go about, you know, figuring out how you do a price increase for clubs and things like that. My example is I pay double for the lane. I swim one lane in the indoor pool, and when I go to the outdoor pool, it doubles. And I also wanted to talk to the city about their risk management program, because I know when we go to the outdoor pool, we have to have lifeguards and things like that. But, you know, hotels and other swimming pools put up a sign, swim at your own risk. We have all our members sign waivers, and I was wondering if the city could provide us with a waiver? Because years ago, I think it was nineteen ninety-three, when we started our program, we actually had a key to the pool. We went in, we swam without lifeguards, we changed the lanes, put them back, and left. And usually, there was a maintenance guy there by the time we left, so we didn't have to lock up or anything like that. So... Not sure what else I was going to say. But that's it.
Okay, thank you. Derek? You want to...
We have more public comments.
Right, I just, well, the gentleman asked a question, and I think what he was saying was he didn't see the, the club rates in this document, and I, I think they're a separate thing. I think you touched on that in your comments, so I'd just like you to...
We are negotiating, and we're in the middle of a cost recovery consultant, consultant firm analysis of all of our programs in Parks and Recreation, the programs. And at the conclusion of that, which should be this summer, we're going to have a better handle on where are we exactly with our costs? Are we too high, are we just right, are we a certain percent under, and are we charging correctly?
But the, the club fees are not in this, in what we're talking about tonight?
The club fees have adjusted over time, that has been one that has adjusted.
Okay, thank you, Derek. Does that answer your question, sir?
I think we'll talk later.
Okay, great. Other public comments? Okay.
Well, it seems to me that if we do have this cost recovery analysis that'll finish by the end of the summer, that maybe we should look at this at that time.
Say that one more time.
I think that we should wait to increase fees, especially if they're working with an analyst that's looking at cost recovery schemes, I'd say. That might make more sense.
Well, I mean, from, one of the big things we talked about when we did our strategic planning was we talked about asset management and how we have to manage our assets in a way that makes them actually pay for themselves. And, and for anybody watching at home or in the audience that's not looking at the, the packet right now, one of the things that Derek did, I assume it was Derek, some Parks and Rec did, was they looked at eight comparative communities, they looked at Lawrence, well, us, Mission, Lenex, and Merriam, Leewood, Overland Park, Topeka, and Olathe. If we were to raise fees by one dollar, which is what's proposed, you raise fees by a dollar on teens, that makes us still the cheapest of any market. If you raise fees by a dollar for an adults, for adults, that makes us still the cheapest of any market. And if you raise fees for seniors by a dollar, that makes us cheap, cheaper than everybody but Olathe. So, even with increases, you're seeing Lawrence being the cheapest community of those studied. So, I, I'm not opposed to giving Parks and Rec the authority to do asset management, which is what we said as a body was important to us at strategic planning.
I do think that we are nearly fifty percent lower, a lot of those communities.
It's considerably lower.
So, regardless of the outcome of any consultant's report is likely to request more of an increase than what we've agreed to do. And here, we're setting in a limited price increase for residents for at least the next two years, which might be the more palatable long-term outcome versus a recommendation for up to seven dollars per day. Because if you go to the pool with two kids, a seven bucks a pop, that adds up pretty quickly, and you can go swimming much less. So, that's going to have a direct impact, in my opinion, on daily swim rates, whereas we, we lessen the impact that that might have if we lock in a rate increase that perhaps isn't as exponential as may be recommended, particularly based on the surrounding community fees, as long as we make a commitment to maintaining those voucher programs that we offer to our community, and perhaps even consider adding more of those. Because I know for some families, even swimming at, you know, one adult and two kids at the current rate is still incredibly costly. That's, I mean, it's nothing compared to a movie, perhaps, but it's still a lot for a family sunburn. And so, and a great time. And so, if we, if we perhaps look at how we can expand those dollar nights or those other opportunities for our community members who, for whom this three dollar for three people going increase is going to affect them negatively, then I think that we are doing them a service by, by raising them only a dollar per year.
I have a question for Derek.
Sure, go ahead.
There seems to be a perception that if you raise these fees, that then the pool be cost neutral. Is, is that true?
It won't get us to that seventy percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's still more things that have to be done.
Seventy percent, not a hundred percent, definitely, but it won't even get us to seventy percent.
No, because we were, we've been fifty-five, forty-five, and if you look at oh eight and you look at seventeen, you would go, how did you maintain roughly the same percentage? As, I hate to say, it's been through hustle and more programming and ingenuity, but you can only put so many swimmers in the water before you start the run out of, of that opportunity. I agree, this is a, one of the last components that will help us as we reevaluate the teams, and are we charging the teams the right amount of money per lane, per rental?
So, there's already, considering that fees only raise seventy percent of the cost, there's already kind of an unwritten contract, you might say, that the city subsidizes the pools.
We do, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure from your all's comments that you understand that we are not reaching cost neutral even with this.
Right, and it's a blend of tiers. If you look at a cost recovery, you have the community benefit, which can be free up to fifty percent. But when you take all of aquatics, I'm rolling in the, the high percentage of individualized special events and programming, and the people that are, are swimming competitively, they have a higher rate of return on that cost recovery than the community. So, when you look at seventy percent, it's not like the daily admission rates is fixing this at all. It's, they're still gaining support.
Yeah, thank you.
Before I weigh in on this, I wanted to check in with Randy and disclose that my, one of my adult daughters is an aquatics instructor for the City of Lawrence. She's worked for the city in that capacity for, I guess, eight to ten years, I can't remember how long.
So, she's never seen a rate increase, huh?
Well, I'm not going to go there, but I'm just going to say she's been an aquatics instructor for the city a lot longer than I've been a city commissioner, okay? So, you know, I, I don't feel there's a conflict there, but I just wanted to check in with Randy before I...
There would not be a conflict there.
Okay, great, well, I just wanted to bring that up. And, you know, I'm, I'm a believer in the aquatics program. You know, I, I think it does great things for, for the kids and for the seniors, they got senior teams. You know, this is one of the things that the city can do to help a healthy community, and we need that. And we've, we've got to make it more cost-effective. And we have, and I appreciate that you're paying attention to how this thing is being balanced. So, thank you so much for looking at this. I guess one of the things that I'm interested in is the daily passes and make sure that kids who can afford this have an opportunity to take advantage of the assets that the city has, because that's where the need is, that's where we have to be most responsive, and I think you can do that. So, you know, if you can keep those efforts up, then, then I'm all for this, thank you. I'd entertain a motion.
I was going to say, I'm not going to make the motion.
Oh, my God, I, I would move we approve adoption of a two-phase aquatics daily admission fee increase of one dollar effective May first, twenty eighteen, and a subsequent one dollar increase effective January one, twenty twenty. Change the age range for the child daily admission rate from five to seven years of age to three to seven years of age.
Second.
I have a motion, Commissioner Herbert, second Commissioner Ananda, all in... I have a motion, Commissioner Herbert, second, Commissioner Ananda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you.
That was our last.
Now that we've approved the consent agenda, we'll move on to public comment. The public is allowed to speak to any items or issues, except those scheduled on the consent agenda or regular agenda portions of the agenda, after first being recognized by the mayor. Each person will be limited to three minutes for public comment, and you may notice we have a clock right over here. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time, rather they will refer the items to staff for follow-up if necessary. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, and state their name and address. Speakers should address all comments and questions to the commission. General public comment. Okay, we'll move on to our regular agenda items. The first is to receive an update on the University of Kansas football facility reconstruction project.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Finally got a warm day out of, out of the spring, so that's a good thing all into itself. I'm Mark Reiski, I'm the Director of Facilities Planning and Development at KU, and I'll provide you a brief update on the football facility. Let me scroll down here so I can actually get to where I'm going to. Okay, let me start with just explaining how important the football facility, the indoor practice facility is to the University of Kansas. A competitive football team is extremely important to the university. It actually helps recruit students, helps with our branding, actually helps bring alumni back to the university, helps in our donor issues, and helps networking opportunities. Competitive football team helps maintain our good standing in the Big 12, and has benefits of TV contract revenues and branding revenues as well. It's strongly tied to our membership in the American Association of Universities. It's also critical that we have this facility, because we're the only Big 12 school that doesn't have an indoor football practice facility. Many, many schools have a facility like we do in Annshue's, that's a shared facility, but it's not a football indoor practice facility. We're just having trouble actually competing with the rest of the Big 12 without it. Lastly, a competitive football team, as we know from the past, brings a lot of people to Lawrence, Kansas on a football weekend. It's a big difference between being competitive and not being competitive, and we believe the indoor facility will help us be competitive. We started this project last fall. We've actually had a couple meetings on campus as open forums, and then we've actually had four community advisory committee meetings to look over what we're doing here, because we are within 150 feet, foot separation from City of Lawrence to the university. Now on to the real, actual point of this conversation. Up in front of you is the map of where the new indoor football practice facility will be. It's west of the stadium on Fambro Way. One corner of it, the northwest corner, is actually within the jurisdictional boundary. As a, as a reference point, it also lists where Anderson Football Complex is, where the practice fields are. So we're actually off of Fambro and Fambro Way. The, the construction on the facility actually started mobilizing this week, so some fencing, some utility locates, items like that. We anticipate to start actual construction or excavation in the next couple of weeks. We've actually had the hearings, we've sent out 100, I mean, 1,700 letters to neighborhoods, Old West Lawrence, Oriad, Hillcrest, West Hills, notifying them of the work, giving them this basic plan and haul routes for the project. We'll be taking soil away from the project, we'll be bringing materials back in, so we informed of haul routes for the work to be done. Right now, our haul routes, our primary haul route will be Fambro Way to Mississippi Street, Mississippi to 9th, and then 9th Street to Iowa Street. At some point this summer, because of the 11th Street realignment, we will end up switching over to Main Street to 9th Street. We are gonna avoid that as long as we possibly can. Our preference would be to actually go to Mississippi Street most of the summer. We do have the luxury of having the excavation contractor on this project be the same contractor that's doing the realignment. So it's in their best benefit to actually keep that open for us as long as they possibly can. And they're actually utilizing some of the soil from this site as fill material that they need for the realignment project. Come fall, we will have trucks that actually will be using Main Street. Mainly our steel trucks. It's a, it's a large, pre-manufactured metal building, it'll come in large sections of steel via trucks, and they'll use that same haul route, it'll be 9th Street to Main Street, Main to, to our actual site.
Mark, if you pull that document down, show the audience the map as well, just to get a key with the mouse.
So, yeah, so there's the map I just described in many, many words, but actually in a picture. And then, if all goes well, and, you know, we have rain when we, is good for us, and not when we don't need it, and so forth, the project will be done by January of '19. So, right now, we're anticipating finishing right after football season. Any questions?
In that lot, so I work in Carutha Leary, familiar with that area, is that taking away a significant amount of parking in those yellow lots?
So that is taking away an upper lot to the north of the drive that serves the upper lots, and it's taking away a row of Lot 59, so Lot 59's the lower lot at the stadium, takes away one row of that when it's all said and done, and takes away the upper lot. Day-to-day parking, the upper lot's not, not utilized. It takes away a little bit of the lot that would come off of 11th Street to the north, too, so we lose about half of the upper lot off 11th Street. The lower lot that goes back towards 11th Street remains as-is.
Okay.
It'll look like we're taking out, because we're actually doing a tremendous amount of stormwater work under it, because we're also doing detention work when we do this project.
And the reason that I asked about that was not for selfish reasons, but because I just wanted to see if there had been conversation with those neighborhoods about the parking that they might be experiencing due to increased student parking on the street.
Yeah, our, our day-to-day use of those lots, those lots don't fill down, down at the stadium. Even on our heaviest class schedule day, those lots don't fill. We would, we would love them to fill on a football weekend, right now, that's not even necessarily the case all the time. But our plan is to the west of this building, upstream of this building, so higher up the hill, we would add back parking at a later time. Right now, that's not part of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from Mark? Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good evening, guys.
Yeah, probably ought to do public comment on that. Any public comment? Okay, thank you. Second item. Conduct a public hearing, consider recommendation from the Historic Resources Commission to designate the property at 1655 Mississippi Street as a landmark on the Lawrence Register of Historic Places. Consider adopting on first reading, ordinance number 9437, designating the property at 1655 Mississippi Street as a landmark. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners Lynn Braddix-Wagner, Historic Resources Administrator for the city. At your February 6 meeting, the commission asked staff to provide additional information about the landmark nomination for 1655 Mississippi Street, the Twin Hoffel Ikenberry House. The Historic Resources Commission determined that the Twin Hoffel Ikenberry House meets the criteria identified in Chapter 22 of the City Code for Landmark Designation on the Lawrence Register of Historic Places. There are currently 87 properties listed in the Lawrence Register of Historic Places, including two historic districts. That means there are over 2,000 properties currently under Environs review. The Environs of the Twin Hoffel Ikenberry House is listed or shown here in the green area on the map. The commission asked staff to provide additional information to property owners within the Environs. Staff mailed a letter to all the property owners within 250 feet, the Environs area, with information about the Environs review. The letter included a chart with project examples that would require building permits and Environs review. The chart also identified if the Environs review would be administrative, or if the HRC would review the project. The commission asked staff to provide information on the time required for the review of building permits for Environs review projects and non-Environs review projects. Staff analyzed projects that were submitted in 2016 and 2017 to study the amount of time that a typical building permit with no associated historic review, and a typical building permit, excuse me, allergies, with an associated historic review took to be issued. The data for building permits with an associated historic review looks specifically at properties that are within the Environs of a property listed in the Lawrence Register of Historic Places, and these were residential building permits. The data was analyzed based on permit valuation and permit type. The data suggested that a building permit with an associated historic review took an average of 24 days, while a building permit without an associated historic review took an average of 12 days. It's important to note that there may be reasons why review time for building permit with an associated historic review is longer than those without, such as owner or contractor not knowing that the property is in the Environs, or that additional information may be needed for the review. And a good example of that is, a lot of times, building permits don't require materials to be submitted for the building permit review, and design review often requires building materials. The commission asked staff to provide a clarification on the owner's support chart that was included in the packet of information for the February 6 meeting. That chart was, the February meeting packet was a chart that was maintained by staff to track written communications prior to the final HRC public hearing. For the landmark nomination, staff has reviewed the correspondence, and the chart in your packet this evening reflects the written communications received by the HRC prior to that November 16, 2017 meeting. The commission also asked staff to provide a sample letter sent to property owners to the HRC in opposition to the nomination, and a sample of that letter was also included in your packet information this evening. The Historic Resources Commission has determined that the Twin Hoffel Ikenberry House meets the criteria identified in Chapter 22 of the City Code for Landmark Designation on the Lawrence Register of Historic Places, and has recommended the city commission landmark the historic property. Staff recommends the city commission consider the recommendation from the Historic Resources Commission and adopt ordinance 9437 on first reading to designate 1655 Mississippi Street as a landmark on the Lawrence Register of Historic Places. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions you may have.
I don't hear any, so I believe we're supposed to conduct a public hearing?
That's correct.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Soden, second from Commissioner Herbert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the public hearing is open. Please step forward, sign in, state your name. You have three minutes, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Dennis Brown, the President of Lawrence Preservation Alliance, and with me is Mabel Rice, the owner of 1655 Mississippi. The Lawrence Preservation Alliance and Ms. Rice are co-applicants for this nomination. 1655 Mississippi is the ninth of 10 properties that, in our LPA project to increase listings on the Lawrence Register of Historic Places. This property was recommended by HRC for approval on November 16 of 2017, after two deferrals at the HRC level. It's been deferred once by city commission, so this has been a long road for this property, but not to question about its significance. It is actually an extremely deserving property, a true landmark in the University Place neighborhood, and in the upper tier of craftsman bungalow architecture in this city. The deferrals were due more to the fact that there are fewer historic designations in the University Place neighborhood compared to other neighborhoods like Old West or East Lawrence. And neighbors needed time to understand the ramifications. I say this knowing that in fact, there are a number of residents in the University Place neighborhood who have been exploring for about two years, the idea of establishing a historic district within that neighborhood. So clearly, there is support for historic designations there, along with those who remain apprehensive. With this last deferral, I think you, as a commission, can feel confident that you have given neighbors enough time to get their questions answered. This would be a fantastic addition to the Lawrence Register of Historic Places, and would be beneficial for the future health of this neighborhood. We're hoping that tonight's the night, and you follow staff recommendation to approve this nomination.
Thank you, Dennis. Ms. Rice?
I'm here as the owner of this gorgeous house, and I don't know much about the technical requirements of information, so I can speak on behalf of the house. The house was built in 1916, so I think of it as a female house. She had her birthday not too long ago, and for that, I replaced some tacky windows that I put in a room on the back of the house. The rest of the windows are the original windows in the house, as is most everything in the structural parts of the house, including a lot of gorgeous, original, never painted woodwork. It's a little interesting that the craftsmen homes were about not just the aesthetics of architecture, but a useful way to live. It was about a lifestyle, and it's been associated with Americans, although its history begins in England in the late 1800s. I want to speak to how the house is a beautiful place to live. The people who had the insight to build this place sighted it beautifully on the end of what was then a horse race track in that neighborhood just south of the university. It was one of the first on the south side of the hill. They used the lay of the land beautifully to put a home in the middle of a three-lot property, that as the craftsman-style homes prefer, with a lovely southern exposure, with a wall of windows along the south side. It's an old house with a lot of wood on the inside of it, but it has gorgeous light all time of the year, and the rooms are laid out in a way that it really is a wonderful way to live. They built the, they planted the trees to complement the house well, they built in ways to handle the water flow on what is really a sloped property in ways that make it manageable and sustainable over such a long period of time. I will be living in the house 40 years as of this summer. The previous longest residents there were the Baker family, and they lived there- and they lived there for more than 30 years. Everyone who has lived in the house has been associated with the University of Kansas. The house has a long history of people willing to share its heritage. When the Bakers had it, Admiral Byrd came to visit, and she was mortified, the woman of the house was mortified because she served him steak only to find out he was a vegetarian. And it was a stain on her reputation for the rest of her life. And I know that because her daughter told me that story. And during the time that I've had it, there have been many resurgence of interest in a craftsman-style home. And this one has been known to people, and they've asked if I would open it for various ways of providing fundraising or educational experiences with the architectural people. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Other public comment, we're in a public hearing.
Hi, Scott Mitchell, 1648 Mississippi. I love my neighborhood. It's a great house, but I'm opposed to this nomination because of the Environs regulations. Lawrence is the only city in the U.S. with this extra review. We already have single-family zoning and follow residential building code if we want to enact, start projects. The project, this Environs process is only going to legislate our design choices and create lengthy delays. That isn't right. So the staff said that it was a 24-day delay on historic permits. I gathered the same data from a records request from Building Services and looked at all of the timeline for projects that went through historic review over the last five years. That 24 days does not include the HRC process for most properties. A lot of properties go through the HRC process before applying for a permit, and then they receive their permit after that. So if you include that HRC, that HRC process beforehand, the time from the first HRC meeting, on average, for full HRC review, the time from that first HRC meeting to receiving a property, it's four and a half months. If you want to look at just properties that went through HRC review after receiving a building permit, so over the last five years, if you went, applied for a permit, go through the HRC process, and then receive your permit, we're also at four and a half, about four and a half months, 86 working days. That's a significant and costly delay. If the city wants to be in the residential design business beyond regular residential code, we at least deserve extremely clear code and a speedy process. We don't have that right now. It's been over four years since the HRC had a meeting where they discussed possibly addressing or altering Chapter 22. We should have a vote in our inclusion in this. In February, Commissioner Herbert asked staff if it was possible to enact or designate a landmark without Environs. So the response was no. What wasn't said is that there are exceptions. So for instance, Oak Hill Cemetery, all projects receive administrative approval except for demolitions. I think everyone would be happy and could get on board if there was a creative way to work around some of these Environs issues. It can create design changes and lengthy delays. This is a tough thing to talk about in a neighborhood, right? The way this is set, the structure, without any sort of voter input, it just puts, pits neighbors against neighbors just simply because we disagree on this portion of the policy. So I want to make it clear that I'd love for the property to actually be able to be recognized, but I don't like this portion of the code around Environs. And I would hope that we could have a discussion about some ways around it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Wilkins. I live at 1652 Mississippi, across the street from Mabel and right next door to Scott. So Scott's right that this issue has been contentious in our neighborhood. And to some degree, that's what we love about Lawrence. I mean, Lawrence is a very diverse crowd. We've got really smart people, and we've got divergent kind of opinions. I want to talk about three issues on this particular project. In fall of 2017, there was an active campaign by one of our neighbors that resulted in a lot of kind of form letters that went out. We received one. I forwarded it to you. It didn't talk about kind of all the things that Scott was talking about. It talked about, you know, issues like have to win approval, can't interfere with my ability to legally enjoy my house. It was all about fear. And as a result, we had a number of neighbors that expressed opposition to that. Since that time, we have engaged, and we've gone out, and we've talked to neighbors, and there's as many, if not more, that are as passionately supportive of this property. And it's because of the issues. The issue, the issues aren't necessarily about the Environs. The issue is about protecting this property. It's a triple lot. It's a jewel of our neighborhood. We know for a fact that people have approached Mabel to have her sell part of that property and build a house right on that big, open lawn. There, the university has talked to her about using it for other resources where they bring in other cars. All these things are, you know, we're trying to protect against. And that's, that's for me what the issue is. It's about this property and saving it. As we look at the Environs, of the 15 people that opposed it, I walked the neighborhood. Eight of their houses, you can't even see Mabel's house. So we invited Lynn over to our house, called her, she was over there like that evening, wasn't very hard. And that would go through an administrative review. It's a dialogue. If, if they want to make improvements to their house, there's virtually nothing, almost anything that they couldn't do to their property that would affect it. Our neighborhood has one-story, two-story, three-story houses. We have brick, stone, dry-bit, concrete. And my time's almost up, but I included a photo of a building that is just up the street that was in the Environs. Flat roof, concrete, glass, went through that process and was supported.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Other public comment? I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Herbert, second from Commissioner Ananda. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we've conducted the public hearing. Now we should consider adopting on first reading, Ordinance Number 9437, designating the property at 1655 Mississippi Street as a landmark on the Lawrence Register of Historic Places. Discussion.
Yeah, when we deferred this last time, one of the conversations that occurred was the deferral was for the purpose of having the opportunity for neighbors to, to kind of meet with HRC or meet with planning, to get information regarding what their rights are in an Environs area. Was there any sort of public engagement that occurred formally?
There was no additional formal public meeting, but we did send a letter to all the property owners giving them additional information, a chart of what types of projects would be reviewed and giving them my information, my contact information to reach out to me if they had questions.
Did any of them reach out to you?
No, I didn't have any additional calls.
Will you bring up that chart? I thought it was a really good chart. I think we should attach that to every potential historic landmark.
I think if you push back a couple of times, you should be able to get back to the agenda.
Yeah, go down, yeah, you guys need to update your security certificate.
It says continue to website.
Yeah, you can continue. There you go. That's a good chart. It shows that the only time you actually go in front of HRC is in three circumstances.
And this was project-specific for this Environs, for this house. You don't, several years ago, in order to be more transparent and to help the Historic Resources Commission make determinations in Environs review cases, they started adopting Environs definitions. It's not required by code that they do that. The Environs is set at that 250 feet around a property. That's what the code says. The Historic Resources Commission actually took that 250-foot area and made a definition so that property owners and staff and the commission could actually have an outline of what that development area was and what specific criteria would be used in that area. So Environs gets the same review, 250 feet. All those properties get reviewed. But like for Oak Hill, for example, it's still a 250-foot radius, but everything gets reviewed by staff at an administrative level instead of all of it going to the Historic Resources Commission. So it's not that-
Why was that decided for Oak Hill?
For Oak Hill, because it's such a large landmass. Most of the properties that are within that 250 feet are far away and don't have any site connection to the actual cemetery. And so there was a determination by the HRC that really there would be no impact to the cemetery by some, you know, project taking effect within that 250-foot radius. So it's not that the Environs aren't there, it's that the definition is such that the criteria is different for the review.
So given that this property consists of three lots with one home on it, would that, did that affect your definition of the Environs and how, how you made this chart?
No, the Environs definition that the Historic Resources Commission has been adopting for residential properties like this property would be all projects go to the Historic Resources Administrator for an administrative review if they meet the standards. And then the only projects that would go to the Historic Resources Commission would be demolition, new construction of primary structures or large additions that are over 25% of the existing building footprint. So when staff was putting the chart together, it was trying to be reflective of those things that were in the Environs definition so that you could see things like painting your house don't get reviewed. Changing out windows don't get reviewed because they don't require building permits, so.
Would it be worth considering on a larger lot like this to do 250 feet within the structure rather than the property?
Well, you usually do the ownership parcel for the property, is how we've done it in the past.
Would it be reasonable to consider that? Or would that, are there reasons specifically that we wouldn't do that?
I think the code language just says property, so we would have to look at that and see if that would be an option.
Okay.
If you had a chance to review the letter, or I guess it was an email from Scott Mitchell, I believe it's attached within the memo. The part that I'm asking specifically about is there's a section of the letter that asks, or that makes the comment that incorrect information was transmitted to residents since the last City Commission meeting. Specifically, he's referencing that very chart. And in it, there are three examples that are provided. Have you had a chance to review that? And then do you have a response? I guess would be what I'm really asking.
Well, I did have a chance to review some of his information, and then looking at the chart. Like I said, this chart is specific to the Environs for this house if it were to be listed. The Environs definition speaks to only new construction of primary structures, demolition, and those large-scale additions. So if you want to build a garage, that would be an administrative review. That would not be a full commission review. And that's reflected in this chart. And I think that was one of the things that was mentioned. The addition of a room, those were just, they were not meant to be misleading. That was just giving an example of the square footage to a house. Those were meant to be building footprint. I mean, we could have been more clear on that, I suppose. We were just trying to give examples for people. The siding is, if you want to do siding on your house, that doesn't get reviewed. The only time that gets reviewed is when it's part of a larger project for a building addition. If you want to do a building addition on your house, the siding material for that addition gets reviewed as part of that overall design of that addition, but it doesn't get reviewed for your whole house. So those are things that may have needed more clarification. Putting all new windows in your house doesn't get a design review. I'm not sure. I did also notice in the chart that many of the, in the Excel spreadsheet, many of the entries were, some of the dates seemed, or the review times seemed very long. A lot of those were projects that also had, were listed in the state or national register or in the downtown, or had an overlay district component. And so when staff was doing our review, we were looking at Environs only, and these all had components with longer time reviews with different standards. So there's a little bit of difference with what staff was reviewing as well. So was there one more that you had a question?
No, that, that was it, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to respond to that and that we could have a conversation about that if need be.
Other questions?
Can you talk about the difference between? I was, I'm not someone who's done remodeling projects, but what the difference between a deck and a patio are, is? Because the patio with a retaining wall and a fish pond requires no permit, no review, but a deck does. And historic review administers. So I was just curious what the differences.
Yes, I know, sometimes we get into the building code lingo and forget that the whole world out there. A deck is something that's considered above ground, and then the patio would be at ground level. So decks typically require building permit if they're so high off the ground, and those are the ones that would get reviewed for the Historic Resources Review as well.
Thank you for clarifying that. Because I was like, I'll just call it a patio.
Any other questions?
I'm ready to move forward.
Okay, ready to move forward.
I'm sorry, I guess I didn't hear what you said.
Did you have comments, or you just want to?
No, I just said I'm ready to move forward.
Any other Commissioner comments?
I think this chart is helpful. And I do like your comment about this ought to be included. Anytime we talk about a historic property, this ought to be something that neighbors are notified of, that so much of what we deal with in City Commission chambers, regardless of HRC or otherwise, is putting out fires of misinformation. And, you know, doing the work on the front end might dispel a lot of those problems.[1754.99] And so, um, I think this chart's helpful if there's a way that, that we can get that out to, to individuals as we move forward with future HRC projects. That would be my preference. I think it would avoid a lot of conflict, neighbor to neighbor conflict because it does. I mean, you're right, this creates problems in, in neighborhoods when it's very awkward having to come to the microphone and say, "I'm here to refute everything my next door neighbor just said." I mean, that's, if there's ways we can avoid that by getting the information out on the front end, that would be a lot better.
Yeah, I think long-term, looking at how we can expedite that process, particularly if, you know, it's taking twice as long to, to move forward on those, how can we expedite that? Obviously, it's probably not going to be the same because it's a different standard of review, but, um, how can we get those two numbers closer together? As well as, you know, considering looking at our broader ordinances around the two hundred and fifty feet and particularly when we're talking about property on large lots, how can we reduce the effect that that will have when the property line is more than a hundred feet from the house or, you know, in instances such as that?
Well, I'd ask about the Oak Hill Cemetery example because when that happened, that was April twenty sixteen and that was a vote that I had to recuse myself from because I own a property in that environs area. And the conversation was, you know, how can, how can a home that was built in the nineteen sixties, you know, it's not historic in any way, how can this affect a cemetery? You know, and, and that was what led to that conversation really about, okay, this is probably a different, different situation here. I think when we're talking about Oak Hill Cemetery versus a specific historic home, those are completely different environs area scenarios. So I appreciate you clarifying that.
Okay. Well, I'd entertain a motion.
So move.
What?
Do I need to read it?
Yeah.
I haven't had to do that for a while.
This would be, uh, considered adopting on first reading ordinance number ninety-four thirty-seven.
You might as well continue.
Okay. Does he know your property at sixteen fifty-five Mississippi Street is a landmark in Lawrence Register of Historic Places? Is that your motion?
Second that, how about that?
No.
All right, I'll make that motion. I don't want to commit to that. I'll second him.
Okay. Motion from Commissioner Soden, second Commissioner Ananda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is to conduct a public hearing regarding a distance limitation waiver request for the twenty eighteen Busker Fest.
I did want to ask something before you start, Mark. I remember I was talking to Brandon about this, about how, uh, the events downtown, that perhaps there was a way to make it more of an administrative approval instead of having to do this every time. And that, that of course is just specific for events that happen downtown.
Right. Um, and, and actually, we have moved to a more administrative, um, level of approval for these street closure events. I think actually what Mark is getting ready to do is conduct a series of public hearings related specifically to the alcohol ordinances. Uh, is that, is that correct, Mark?
It is.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
Yeah, and that's, that's a statutory requirement. Um, sorry, I'm playing dodge, dodge. Good defense. Um, and so that, that's, uh, actually a statutory requirement. So Mark can probably explain better than I could or Randy as well, but, um, these ordinances will, um, will temporary, temporarily suspend the restriction on drinking in the street, um, selling and serving and consuming alcohol in the street um, for the, the, um, defined period of time. Uh, without that ordinance, which is required to be adopted by the city commission or by the governing body of, of municipality, um, the, the street or consuming in the street would not be prohibited.
And then that requires a public hearing.
Correct.
Doing an ordinance.
So Commissioner Soden, not all of the alcohol ordinances require a public hearing, just the ones that are within four hundred feet of a church or school. Uh, but to your question, we have internally talked about, uh, we initially talked internally about doing it in a downtown area, just the churches and schools. But then we thought, well, is that to include some and exclude some? So really the scope should probably grow to the, cause it's a, it's a prohibition error type statute that requires that. So, but it, but it would require commission action to overrule that to where these three, the next three items that you're about to see would have otherwise been on a consent agenda.
Right. That is something that I want to continue to look at if, if we can.
Can I just make sure I understood what you're saying, Brandon? What's happened is, is that the, the alcohol is statutory under Kansas law?
Mark, do you want to explain that? Or Randy?
Well, maybe Randy would be better with the stat, state statute, but-
Right, state statute. Because we consume in a public place both under the code, city code and state statute, we'd have to get a waiver here to allow it on a temporary basis. And so that's why-
But what we've done is we've moved the, um, right-of-way request to the administrative process.
We're in the process of doing that on the right-of-way and at the same time, hopefully this summer, we can bring our alcoholic beverage code up to date and, and hopefully streamline a lot of these processes so you don't have to, hopefully don't see this again next year. It maybe comes quicker or we handle it administratively. We haven't decided exactly where that's going to go, but that's on our to-do list for this year.
Thank you.
Look at that. They say government's not efficient.
Mayor, I might also kind of piggyback on what Randy's saying. All these street event, the actual right-of-way permit are being approved administratively. You're just allowing the sell of al-, or the self-consumption or possession of alcohol.
But if my memory serves, we used to also do the right-of-way.
You used to, yes.
So that's, that's the progress that we've made is, you know, you can call it progress, you can call it change, whatever. But, you know, we actually have taken the right-of-way process to the administrative. This hasn't been taken to that point yet.
These progress would be considered a reduction in time it takes to process.
There you have it.
Except the addition of time where we spent explaining the change.
Well, just so everybody understands.
It balances out.
Completely off topic from the agenda item.
Thank you for-
But that's on me. Okay, that's on me.
So just vote yes and I'll go home. Okay, so, uh, I apologize, I couldn't get the agenda to come back up. I'm not technically-
Click on continue to website, not recommend.
Okay, thank you. See, he's going to blame me if something goes wrong because I clicked the button.
I don't think the Russians have hacked our servers yet.
So, um, regular agenda, item three tonight, commissioners, is related to the Busker Fest event that will be held on May twenty-sixth and May twenty-seventh of two thousand and eighteen. Your actions tonight are to conduct a public hearing regarding the distance limitation waiver and find that the proximity of the temporary sale of alcoholic liquor for this event is not adverse to public health, welfare or safety and grant a distance limitation waiver. And the second, uh, action would be to consider adopting on first reading ordinance ninety-four fifty-one, allowing the sale, possession and consumption of alcohol associated with this event. We have sent a notice as required by statute to the Salvation Army thirty-day notice. We've not received any correspondences from them. The adjacent property owners for this event were also notified by, by mail. And, uh, the event organizer, Richard Brenner, is here as well if you have questions about the event specifically.
Thank you, Mark.
We'll all move that we open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion to open the public hearing. Commissioner Soden, second from Commissioner Ananda, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is open.
I'll move we close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Soden, second from Commissioner Herbert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Back to us. We've conducted the public hearing.
I think the Busker Fest is, is a great event, so I'd be happy to move.
Okay.
That, uh, did someone want to say something back there? I thought I saw-
No, we already had that.
Okay. Don't want to skip anything.
I got it.
Yeah. Okay, so you were going to make a motion, I think?
Yeah, now I've lost my place here.
Okay.
I'd move that we adopt on first reading ordinance nine four five one, allowing sale, possession and consumption of alcohol on the nine hundred block New Hampshire Street and on the one hundred block of East Eighth and the public right-of-way during the event.
Second.
Okay, so we need to find that the proximity of the temporary sale of alcoholic liquor-
And find that the-
Is not adverse to public safety. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, public welfare, safety and grant a distance limitation waiver. That's your motion as I understand it.
That is my motion.
And that is my second.
Okay, so we've clarified that. Thank you. Thank you, Sherri. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we learned how to do this.
All right, commissioners, item number four is related to the final Friday event will be held on May twenty-fifth, um, in the same location. And so your actions tonight are to conduct a public hearing regarding a distance limitation waiver and find that the proximity of the temporary sale of alcoholic liquor for this event is not adverse to the public health, welfare or safety and grant a distance limitation waiver. And action two for this item is to consider adopting on first reading ordinance ninety-four fifty, allowing the sale, possession and consumption of alcohol associated with this event. As, as well as the last event, thirty-day notice was sent to the Salvation Army. Uh, we've received no feedback or comments from them. Uh, notice was also sent to the adjacent property owners about this event. And Ben Alvarez from the Art Center is also here tonight if you have questions regarding the event.
I move that we open the public hearing. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ananda, second Commissioner Soden, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is open. Public comment.
Move that we close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, Commissioner Herbert, second Commissioner Ananda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed.
Another great event.
I move that we find the proximity of the temporary sale of alcohol for the twenty eighteen final Friday event is not adverse to the public welfare, safety and we grant a distance limitation waiver and adopt on first reading ordinance number ninety-four fifty.
Second.
We have a motion, Commissioner Herbert, second Commissioner Soden, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Well done, Matthew. Okay, number five.
Mayor, commissioners, this item is related to the Hot Rod Hullabaloo event, which will be held on Saturday, September twenty-second on Massachusetts Street between South Park and North Park Streets. Uh, your actions tonight are to conduct a public hearing regarding a distance limitation waiver and find that the proximity of the temporary sale of alcoholic liquor for this event is not adverse to the public health, welfare or safety and grant a distance limitation waiver and consider adopting on first reading ordinance nine four five three, allowing for the sale, possession and consumption of alcohol associated with the event. Uh, thirty-day notice was sent both to Saint John's Catholic Church and Trinity Lutheran Church. Uh, no correspondences have been received by the city related to those notices. Uh, the event organizer, Stephen Cronister, is also here if you have questions.
Thank you, Mark.
I'll move that we open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, Commissioner Soden, second Commissioner Herbert, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is open.
Move that we close public hearing?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Herbert, second Commissioner Soden, all in favor?
Aye. Another great event.
Another great event.
I would move that we find the proximity of the temporary sale of alcoholic liquor for the twenty eighteen Hot Rod Hullabaloo is not adverse to the public welfare, safety and we grant a distance limitation waiver and adopt on first reading ordinance number nine four five three.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Herbert, second Commissioner Ananda, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Events to look forward to. Okay. Number six.
Good evening, mayor commissioners. Um, this item in continuation of a theme would typically be a consent agenda item or not for state bond law that requires a public hearing to be held. Uh, this item is considering a resolution that would approve the city of Wichita to issue industrial revenue bonds on behalf of a variety of facilities. Our particular action is authorizing them to issue it related to a facility in Lawrence, which is requiring the resolution that you have in front of you this evening. So this is a little bit of a different industrial revenue bond issue where you're typically being asked to issue them. We are not being asked to issue this, um, city of Wichita is. So that, that would be the resolution this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Is that why we don't see bond counsel in the room?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, no other questions for Diane? Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Ananda, second Commissioner Herbert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment.
Move it close?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Ananda, second Commissioner Herbert, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've conducted the public hearing. Does everybody understand the resolution? Okay.
Well, I can move that we do that.
Okay.
So I move that we adopt resolution number seven-two-four-eight, approving the issuance of the city of Wichita, Kansas for its healthcare facilities, revenue bonds for the purpose of financing and refinancing acquisition, construction, improvements and equipment of the Presbyterian Manor Facility located at fourteen-twenty-nine Castle.
Second.
Okay, motion, Commissioner Soden, second Commissioner Herbert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A lot of construction up there on Castle, huh? Okay. Thank you all. We're on to commission items.
I don't have-
Commission items?
Nope.
I wish Lisa were here because she was at the, the, um, the same neighborhood meeting that I attended last night, which we had to kick Commissioner or Mayor Boney out of because there were three of us there.
Was that Sunset Hills?
Yes.
Yeah, that's my neighborhood.
Um, and we were invited to drive on Castle and I'm trying to remember between which streets, but where it's one-way at this point. Um, just to look at the, um, recommendation, I think, that was made at one point, that that be a one-way street or that we modify the traffic there. So we were, we were all invited to drive that street, particularly around five PM, noon or eight AM, just to have that experience. So I thought I would share that with the rest of us.
I'm not sure that that's a fair comparison myself, actually, but I understand that's sometimes what people look at.
Right, right.
Yeah. Um, I want to report that I had, um, a wonderful opportunity to spend some time with some city staffers in, uh, Decatur, Georgia last week. That's why I wasn't here. Uh, we went to the Walkability Action Institute and I was very impressed with the presenters and the activities. We took a walk on the Atlanta Belt Line. We, we rode, I think, the train, caught a bus, had lunch, walked on the Belt Line and it, it was very impressive. And I would really like to have the opportunity to have some of the, the presenters come to Lawrence. And so I'm trying to figure out a way that I might be able to work on doing that, maybe use some of the city commission budget or something like that. I think conversations that we might be able to have in this room at a work session, also the opportunity for, uh, some of these folks to talk to people in the community. Um, I would think the KU engineering folks would be interested in hearing from them and, um, perhaps also the public administration school. So, uh, that's something I'd like to work on. I, I guess I'd like to get some feedback from, from you, my fellow commissioners, to see if that's something you'd be interested in.
Is it individuals regarding walkability?
Yeah, um, the, Mark Fenton is a, is a consultant who, who pretty much led the, the classes. Um, there was a woman who was with the National Association of Chronic Disease Directors. I think her name is Karma Harris. Charles Brown is, uh, I think at Rutgers. He talks about equity in, in the built environment. Uh, Chris Katsiski, I think, is at CDC in, in Atlanta. And, and there's a guy with the, uh, National Association of Realtors. I actually saw him in San Francisco when we were at the Affordable Housing Conference, Lisa, and I saw him there and then he happened to be a presenter at this thing. So, I, you know, I think there's an opportunity here for us to learn more ourselves, have our community learn more. And so I, I think it's worth, worth doing, but, you know, I, I wanted to bring it back and, and share it here.
Do we have any idea on cost associated with that?
I don't have a clue.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that, that to me would be a big part of the conversation because we have a lot of people in our own community that have led such dialogues. I don't think our budget for the city commission is particularly large in the, as I recall, in the twenty eighteen budget. So I don't know that we're, if that's the pot you're allocating from, I don't know that we have a, a huge pile to pull from.
Yeah, I guess what I'd like to do is have an idea if you're interested in me working on this with the idea we try to fund it out of our own budget and not go over budget. You know, that's, and, you know, I'm, I'm, this is kind of like, this would be neat, but, you know, it's possible that there's some lineup here that, that we might be able to work with.
I think that there are opportunities for collaboration such as with, um, Livwell, other organizations that might be able to secure your ants in order to have some kind of broader, what is the word I'm looking for? Conference kind of situation or seminar. We don't know unless we're tying it to a specific project that, um, using our funds for that rather than, um, looking at something that we do have coming up and, and using consultants or individuals to come to a work session to educate us on those issues. I just want to be responsible with what we have and make sure- I just want to be responsible with what we have and make sure that we're applying it to issues that are before the commission now, despite the fact that it sounds incredibly fascinating and useful and interesting.
Yeah. Well, that's good for me to hear. Okay. So it's not an overwhelming favorite? Okay.
I would encourage you to see, you know, definitely share that information with other organizations and hopefully be able to bring them in an alternative means.
It's hard for me to have the conversation without knowing what, I mean, frankly, what the price tag associated with this. I mean, if we're talking...
Well, I mean, would you like for me to try to work with the budget and come back with a proposal, or do you want me to just forget?
You know, I think you're more than welcome to try to solicit a price tag.
Okay.
You know, but I wouldn't... I wouldn't want to have the conversation without knowing what the variables are at play.
Well, I'll see what I can work out, then.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other commission items? Okay, thanks. On to the city manager's report.
So I'll report that before Stuart went off to Atlanta with some of our city staffers, he was a bit concerned about, you know, how he interacted with staff, because there's this, you know, there's this degree of separation between elected officials and staff. I encouraged him to let his hair down and...
What little there is.
Yeah. And have a good time with him. And the reports back, I get that he was, he let his hair down, but he maintained his mayoral position, so I figured I had to report that back to the commissioners. I think the other thing, too, as to your request, Commissioner, there's a couple ways to go about what you're looking at. You know, we can price some of those things, but when you asked me about it earlier, you indicated that it wouldn't be till this fall.
Right.
So you could actually, you know, you know how I am about contextual, out-of-cycle budget items? And you could actually, you know, we could come up with a price, and then you could ask your commissioners to consider it as a part of the 19 budget, which wouldn't be that much later, you know, for the actual presentation to occur, because you could start, you know, scheduling sometime after the 1st of January. So that's another way to look at it.
Okay.
Apparently, we're having some technical difficulties with the manager's report, at least online, so there's something going on out there. It says, be careful, it might be toxic. Don't go in there.
You can continue on to this site.
All right.
It's just the security certificate, the date expired.
Yeah, great.
IT's aware and you're working on it.
All right. So it might pop on while I'm talking about this. Residential lot inventory, I thought this might come up during the discussion of the annexation, as it was removed. But 2017 saw a 5% decline in residential lot supply for single-family housing compared to the previous year. Almost all lot absorption occurred in newer subdivisions, with demand increasing by 15%, 5% rather, from 2016. Inventory of single-family lots located in new subdivisions was estimated at 2.1 years in 2017, approximately 16% less than the previous year. The next report I have is on sales tax. The attached March report show year-to-date sales tax revenues saw a 2.7% increase over the same period in 17. March, however, of 2018, saw a 10.4% increase over the same month in 2017. And you'll see these variants occur throughout the course of the year, and you really have to look at it more long-term than just by the month. We have attached the annual report for the Public Works Department. I'm not going to go into that. Mayor, you pointed out under Parks and Rec updates that Crystal Miles received a state award. She received the Kansas Foresters Award from the Kansas Forest Service, received at the Tree City USA Community Recognition Day here in Lawrence. Another thing that's kind of interesting is the National Basketball League will hold a three-day Central Regional Junior NBA World Championship Basketball Tournament at Sports Pavilion. Spectators may want to go out and watch some of the young people show their stuff, and you might see some future NBA star show up, at least as I understand what's going to happen. Police Department, community Q and A on the new police facility. The Lawrence Police Department will host a community question-and-answer at Free State High School for the new police facility on Monday, April 23rd, at 6:30 PM at that location. Lawrence Police Captain Anthony Brixius and Assistant Director Utilities Melinda Hager will provide brief updates about the new facility and answer questions from the public at that location. Integrated Animal Health update. This was an animal health startup with the high-growth promise that established its headquarters at the Bioscience Tech Center in 2015. The city and county approved an incentive agreement to assist the startup based on a three-year performance requirement. We now understand the company is no longer operating and their performance of the third year is questionable. Under the incentive agreement, the city and county equally shared an $100,000 grant that was forgivable over a three-year period based on performance. Rent payments were suspended by both the city and county in late 2017, pending more information about the status. The $100,000 grant was paid upfront, and Integrated Animal Health met compliance for the first two years of the grant, thus there is no performance clawback applicable for those years. City and county are currently reviewing options related to the potential clawback related to that third-year performance, and will report more as we become knowledgeable about that. BBC Consulting presents preliminary survey results to Affordable Housing Advisory Board. Presented some of those preliminary results from resident landlord and employer survey results from the housing study to Affordable Housing Advisory Board at its meeting on April 9th. A total of 472 residents participated in the phone survey, and 1,978 online resident surveys were completed, along with 57 employer surveys and 392 landlord surveys. BBC Consulting will be returning to present preliminary market analysis to Ahab in May. The city commission will receive a presentation from the consultants at its June 5th meeting. Hike Through History comprises a series of 10 museum-quality interpretive panels along the Burrows Creek Trail and Linear Park. The interpretive panels function as an outdoor museum exhibition. This project was conceived and overseen by Henry Fortunato, fellow at the Hall Center for Humanities of the University of Kansas and founder of Sunflower Republic LLC. The development of this project was in partnership with the Lawrence Public Library, the Watkins Museum of History, the Hall Center for the Humanities of the University of Kansas, and Freedom's Frontier National Heritage Area. City of Lawrence and the Lawrence Parks and Rec Department also contributed to the project and are the recipients of the gifted panels. Sadly, Mr. Fortunato was diagnosed with cancer last spring while he was working on the project and passed away in January before he could see the panels installed. He did get to see the pictures of the panels in place. Henry's wife and son and the aforementioned project collaborators are to hold an unveiling event 9:30 to 11:00 on Saturday, April 28th, at the Burrows Creek Trail at 900 East 15 Street, and all are invited. In terms of future agenda items that we have coming up, move to that section. On May 1st, we'll receive direction regarding, we're going to ask for direction from the commission regarding Queens Road. We're going to discuss the alternative delivery procedures that we promised to bring back to the commission. Going to consider adoption on second and final reading of the Community Police Review Board, and we'll have a staff memo and some updates based on comments from the last time that you reviewed this. Consider site plan for the expansion of use for logis located at 728 Mass. Street. Resolution of intent to issue the industrial revenue bonds for the Main Society Project, and receive the perk recommendations for the 2017 Annual Report Economic Development Support and Compliance. At the next work session on May 8th, you'll see a CIP presentation. We'll talk about infill development and the citizen survey presentation from our police consultant, I think is scheduled for that as well.
Hey, Tom?
Yes?
Back to the regular agenda items.
Yes.
Of course, I'll be at a conference for the May 15th.
May 15th, yes.
Yeah, so you have on here, police facility. What are you going to talk about with the police facility, do you know?
I think we were going to come back to the commission to get additional direction as to methods of construction that we might proceed at that point. I think that's where we're scheduled to come back with that.
And then the legal opinion regarding the streetlight tariff, is that something that perhaps I should be here for?
Well, we now have, you know, we hired outside counsel. They've reviewed this, and I think we've secured a recommendation from, or an opinion from the state, which basically says the opinion from our attorney was accurate that that Westar does actually control whether it is a, what's the terminology?
Standard.
A standard streetlight or a non-standard. And so we need to bring you up to date about that, kind of share some cost information, probably need, in the interim, pursue some cost information from Westar. But that's a, that's a bit of a twist, because it's a fairly significant financial consideration that I don't think you necessarily thought you'd confront, based on a lot of testimony from the audience and, I think, some wishful thinking, quite frankly, so.
So is it something that you think that I should be here for?
Well, they're pressing, you know, the, I can't think of their name, but the coalition of citizens that presented this issue, I think they were anxious to see it back. And so we said that we'd bring it back sometime in May and trying to balance agendas and needing some time to refine some things. That's the date we picked. Are you going to be available online that night?
I don't know. Last time I did that, it wasn't...
Yeah, and you're going to be out of country.
Very effective.
You're out of country, right?
Yeah.
I think there's a high expectation on the part of the citizenry that this be brought back.
Okay. Well, if there's something that seems very controversial, I guess you can always, if there's a specific action item you need to work on, you can defer that. But if it's more of a general conversation, then that sounds okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, I don't know where the commission will take it that night, but there'll be quite a bit of information to come back.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Thank you, Tom. Calendar?
There'll be more than three of us that are going to be part of the Craft and Compassion Event, but it's spread so far out, there's no chance we'll encounter each other, so I think it's safe to not have that on there.
I think Commissioner Larson and I are on the Earth Day Parade on Saturday. I think we're both in there. I don't know if anybody else is going to that.
I'll be there, but I won't be in the parade.
We'll just talk about the weather.
We might not even see each other necessarily, other than you can throw candy at my kids.
No, I actually don't throw candy in parades. I'm not a very good mayor. So. Anything else for calendar?
I'll move we adjourn. Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Soden, second from Commissioner Nanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.